Quorum being present, Constable affirmed posting. The meeting is now called to order. The first order of business, I'd like to introduce Ron Rinaldi from Turning. You all received a clicker when you checked in. Those are going to be used for voting the articles today, and he's going to explain that to you right now. Ron?
Thank you, Terry, and thank you to the town of Stockbridge for allowing us to help make things a little more streamlined. We've been utilizing, this technology has been utilized in various communities throughout Massachusetts for roughly six, seven years. A few weeks ago, we did this, it was in Ipswich, a few weeks prior, in Westwood. And believe it or not, despite the pandemic, last September, we were using it just up the road in Lenox. And it's done really well. It's provided, more than anything, a sense of anonymity. Not just to mention that for the traditional voice vote, where some of us may have better vocal cords than others, it's not a true indication as to how we feel on a given issue. And so, we introduced the technology to you to give you a little more confidence, anonymity, and a more accurate or more truer representation of how your community feels. As you'll see, the keypads, they're alphanumeric, not quite like an old touch-tone phone. All articles, motions, amendments, possibly some individuals up for vote today, will be decided with these keypads. When we are ready to vote on a given article or such, I will indicate to the moderator that polling is open, and you can cast your votes. And... So, when we are ready to vote on a given article, I will indicate to the moderator that polling is open, and you can cast your votes. Once announced, you have 20 seconds to cast your vote before polling automatically closes. The moderator will then receive the results to be announced. And your voting instructions, they're incredibly simple. If you want to vote yes on any article, motion, amendment, or a given individual, you press 1. If you want to vote no on an article, motion, amendment, or certain individual, you will press 2. And if you want to abstain from voting on any article, then you simply press nothing. You don't vote. It's that simple. Before, as you may be noticing it now if you're trying the voting, here's what I'd like for you to do and what I'd like for you to look for. So, I currently have the voting software in a test mode. As mentioned, when you cast your vote, your selection, either 1 or 2, will be displayed as 1 slash A or 2 slash B. So, you know, go ahead, press the number 1 or press the number 2. Feel free to try it every few seconds and tether between the two if you like. And when you cast your vote, you'll also see a green light flash quickly alongside your selection. That's confirmation that your vote was cast. At the same time, you'll see a smaller two-digit number above the selection you make. And that smaller number should likely read the number 74, and that is the frequency that is communicating between your keypad and my computer to collect the votes. If for some reason your keypad doesn't read 74 on the top of your display, when you make a selection, come forward or raise your hand and I'll address it. Keep in mind, if you press something other than 1 or 2, you will get a zero. So, like, press 7 or press 9, you will get a zero with a slash through it. And what that means is it's simply an ineligible response. Yep?
You press the button first. You press the number first. And then you're like, okay, you got such a monitor.
You're actually segueing into the rest of my script, yes. Excellent question. So, the question is, what happens if you change your vote? As I mentioned, if you are voting on an issue, and let's say you press the number 1, if you want to change your vote to, say, number 2 or vice versa, you can. It will recognize your last eligible response. And by that, I mean is, you pressed 1 to vote yes, and for some reason you accidentally hit 8. Don't worry, it still counts as 1 because, as mentioned, 8 is an ineligible response. It will only recognize your last eligible response. If you really support an article, or an amendment, or a person, and you want to show your love by pressing 1 38 times... It will recognize again your last eligible, but only your single response. In other words, I want you, I would prefer that you make your first selection your last Your votes are anonymous, and I can't emphasize that enough. Now, the software is very robust to where I can track the voting by an individual keypad if I want to, but there's a little catch. None of us know what keypad you have. So, again, we're reinforcing the anonymity for everyone. Finally, these keypads are not yours to keep. Don't take them home with you. They're expensive to replace. They're not calculators. They won't open your garage door. It's not going to tell you, you know, what four digits to play in tonight's lottery's number game. It's, again, when, where you receive them, please drop them off. That said, does anyone have any other questions or any concerns with their keypad? Yes? I would say we're good considering we've received 148 different keypads testing in. Keep in mind also that the voting will be shut down now, and it will only be active. So, if you're playing with the keypads while during discussion, it's just going to flash red or yellow, it will be completely inactive. Only when we are ready to vote will we then go ahead and open the polling. And again, if there are any concerns during the polling, I'll be happy to quickly address it for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Very exciting. And good morning. I'd like to welcome all of you to the Stockbridge Annual Town Meeting. As you notice, unfortunately, Gary Johnson, our moderator, cannot be with us this morning. That means that we will have to nominate a temporary moderator to preside over the meeting. The process will be as follows. I will call for nominations for the temporary moderator, which must be followed by a second. Should there be more than one nomination, the person with the highest vote total will be the temporary moderator. I will then swear that person in, and the meeting will be theirs. So, right now, I'd like to call for nominations for a temporary moderator. Do I hear any?
Chairman of our board, Charles Kenny.
Charles Kenny?
Yeah.
And a second? Do I hear a second? And I heard Jay? Just a nomination.
I'd like to nominate a former Selectman, Select Board Chair, member of the Finance Committee, Stephen Schatz, to be the moderator.
Second? Okay. Any more?
Yes, I would rather not be known.
Okay. We can do that. Any more nominations? Oh, Anita? Thank you, Anita. I appreciate that, but I think I'm not going to do that. You might have to, you might have to call the ambulance, because I might have a stroke. Thank you anyway, though. I appreciate it. Any other nominations? Hearing none? Steve Schatz? Are you willing to do this for us today?
I am.
Come on over, we'll get you sworn in.
Okay.
Oh, oh. Was I supposed to? Did I have to ask? It's, it's, okay, all right. It's unanimous. It's unanimous. Do you solemnly, you raise your right hand for me? Do you solemnly swear that you will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform to the best of your ability the duties for which you have been temporarily elected in accordance with the general law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the town of Stockbridge?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's all yours. All yours.
Okay. Well, it's not often that, in fact, I can't recall ever having been elected by acclamation. Thank you, all. Before we start the meeting, there are just a few comments that I'd like to make, one of which is, and please tell me if you can hear me in back. All set? Okay. One of my dear old colleagues who served as town moderator in East Long Meadow for over 20 years, I called him upon hearing that I might be nominated, and his first words were, "Congratulations on being promoted from the Select Board to Town Moderator," which I think is something that Gary would appreciate. And speaking of Gary, he's doing well, just not able to come to the meeting, to this meeting. I'm sure he will be back for special meetings and certainly for meetings in the future. So, just a few, a few other comments about how the meeting is going to be run, not dissimilar from, certainly from the way in which Gary has run this meeting as well as special town meetings for years. All speakers must go to a microphone. I will not recognize anyone from the audience. So, the microphones are over here to my left, and the microphone right here in the center of the gym. I will not impose any time limit, although I would ask people to be as brief as possible, to stay on point, and try not to be repetitive. This is going to be a long meeting. We have eight articles which deal with bylaw changes, and they require a fair amount of explanation, and they'll be, so, and please stick around. Don't leave the meeting. A lot of mischief occurs toward the end of the meeting when people get up and leave. And I'll have another word to say about that in a moment. I will limit the number of comments that people can make to one per article. The goal here is to give everybody who wishes to speak the opportunity to speak without having the floor dominated by one or more people. And that's just, you know, common sense and courtesy, I think. There will be no personal attacks tolerated. We speak to the issues, we do not speak to the people. And this is a town meeting which has been very good about that, at least in all of the years that I've been coming to them. There are occasions when the debate gets somewhat heated, and people want to make a personal comment. I will stop that. All amendments, proposed amendments and motions must be submitted in writing. It's, the translation from the floor of motions and amendments to the written text is very important. It's going to be very important for establishing the legitimacy of votes. So, please, if you have a motion to make, submit it in writing. If you have an amendment, do the same thing. Now, I have, town moderator, that is, has the authority to alter the meeting agenda. It is generally not done, and certainly not done without the consent and advice of the Board of Selectmen, which establishes the agenda at the very beginning. And I have consulted with members of the board about altering the agenda. So, if you will look at Article 46 through Articles 54, these are the bylaw changes. They require a great deal of discussion, I suspect, or they will demand a great deal of discussion. And I want to make certain that the largest number of people have the opportunity to both hear the discussion and to participate as well. So, I am going to, with the authority granted to me by statute and otherwise, I'm going to move Articles 46 through 54 to a place in the warrant following Article 6. Thank you. Article 6 will be the last of the major financial articles. And then, we will do 46 through 54, and then come back to commence again with Article 7. So, with that, I don't think there's anything else that I want to say. Let's get on with the meeting. I will try not to break the lectern, as Gary once did. And...
Steve, may I? Charlie Kenny from...
Charlie, I'm happy to recognize you for one purpose.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry. Oh, I just wanted to ask...
I'd like your name and address, please. Anyone coming to the microphone, I should have said that. Please give your name and address.
Charlie Kenny, Five Meadow Road. I just wanted to clarify something. Are you asking us to put every motion in writing, or just motions to amend warrant items?
Every motion.
Every motion?
Every motion.
So, in other words, if I were to make a motion now, I would have to also submit it in writing?
Please.
Would I do that before I make the motion, or after?
Contemporary is with it.
Okay. So, I'll provide the written thing after I make a motion?
Yes. That would be helpful.
May I make a motion about the general recital of the warrant?
Excuse me again?
May I make a motion about the general recital of the warrant?
Feel free to do so.
Okay. I'd like to move that Articles 7 through 20 be combined for the purposes of voting and debate only, and that in the recital of that, those warrant items, 7 through 20, the phrase "to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance the sum of" be only recited once at the time of Article 7, and not needed to be repeated after that.
Charlie, I'm going to ask you to defer making this motion until we arrive at Article 7.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
But thank you very much. Okay. With those preliminaries, the meeting has been called to order. I now call upon Roxanne McCaffrey, who I think is going to introduce Article 1.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me in the back? A little closer? Is that better? Okay. Article 1. I move that the following officers be chosen for the year commencing July 1, 2021. Fence viewers, Gary Johnston and Christopher B. Marsden. Measures of wood, William Markham and Mark Thadding. Measures of coal, H. Linden Searing and Nicholas F. Nadorf. Weighers of sand and gravel, John Jake Donovan and Clinton Schneider. Field drivers, Louis Perron. So, we'll open the poll. Please press 1 for yes, 2 for no.
Is, the motion has been made. Is there a second? A second?
Okay. Sorry. Now, the poll's open.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote.
Voting is open.
The voting is open.
Okay. Is he going to tell me when the voting is open?
The voting is open. The vote?
You have 20 seconds.
1 for yes, 2 for no. I'll get used to this, too. The vote is 144 in favor, 5 against. The motion carries. I'm not going to pound this gavel every time we do this. Article 2, again, Roxanne McCaffrey.
Thank you. Article 2. I move that the town accept all printed reports of town officers and committees as published in the annual report. Do I hear a second?
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Voting is open. The 146 in favor, 1 opposed. It is vote. Article 3.
I move that the town accept all printed reports of town officers, I'm sorry. Article 3, I move that the town pursuant to Chapter 41, Section 108 of the Massachusetts General Laws fix the annual salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021 as follows. Moderator: $242. Select Board Chair: $5,552. Two Select Board Members: $4,545. Town Clerk: $46,356. Board of Assessors: Chair: $3,987. Two Board of Assessor Members: $3,193. Tree Warden: $2,008. And I might add that these numbers are included in the operating budget, which is Article 4.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Remember, 1 in favor, 2 against, 3 if by C, and whatever. Okay. The vote is 151 in favor, 3 opposed. It is a vote. Article 4. Mr. Bykowsky, front and center.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Bykowsky was my father. He's unfortunately long gone. Can everybody hear me okay? From a procedural standpoint, shall I go right through the articles, the Article 4, or do you want to go by category and...
That's pretty much up to you. This is, everyone has a copy of Article 4, which is the operating budget of the town. I think that if you were to do the same thing that you've done in the Baby Town meeting, which is to do the highlights, and then I will, you know, when we get to the discussion point, people can ask specific questions of you about line items. And that's the way I would do it, because otherwise, we'll be here the rest of the day.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. I'm Jay Bykowsky, Chairman of the Finance Committee. I'd like to introduce our committee, who've given a great deal of their time. Stephen Schatz, member of the committee, Pam Boudreau, Diane Rouse, Jim Bolfance, Neil Holden, and regrettably, Bill Vogt had a family commitment and could not be with us today. I'd also like to thank Michael Canales and the department heads, all of our department heads, for exercising commendable fiscal discipline and budget compliance relative to the budget that we are going to present. And we've enjoyed working greatly with Michael, with Erica Rolson, soon, excuse me, soon to be hired, our new accountant, and our Select Board Chair, Roxanne McCaffrey, Chuck Cardillo, and Patrick White. Also, I think Chris Marsden deserves an award. He's actually set up twice, outside and inside, and I don't know, maybe we should have timed which one was faster and given him award based on how quickly he could set up inside and outside. The Finance Committee, everybody, has met diligently, well deserved, well deserved. The Finance Committee has met diligently a dozen times since January 1st, with the Select Board, some with the Select Board, some with town administration, and with a number of our department heads, a combination of these meetings, to, as part of its role, fully inform itself as to the budget requests for monetary appropriation or borrowing. And these meetings, folks, have culminated in the articles which you have in front of you, and will be approved by you this morning.
I have one interruption.
Certainly.
I am reminded, Jay, that you have to read the motion. So, having said that, if you could read Article, motion right here.
What happens if I can't read this? All right. Article 4. Forgive me. It's a part-time staff, you know, what can we do? I move that the town raise and appropriate a sum of $7,555,4952 to defray costs, the expenses of the various departments of the town for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021 in accordance with recommendations of the Finance Committee.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? Before we proceed to vote, Jay, if you'd like to make a presentation, please feel free to do so.
I think that's very appropriate. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. It's important to know that this Article 4, 5, and 6 have been carefully reviewed at these meetings that I cited previously, and have received Finance Committee input and careful review. And basically, our committee, along with the Select Board, has recommended approval of Article 4, okay? And for your information, it's, as is stated in the town bylaws, the Finance Committee must review and approve or disapprove all articles calling for appropriation in advance of the annual town or special town meeting. So, the Finance Committee and the Select Board, as was mentioned, have approved Article 4. Okay? Here we go. Article 4, with respect to the operating budget. And this is exclusive, exclusive of education. Article 4, for $7,554,000, as I stated, is $61,098 less than fiscal year 21. That's the total, Article 4, without including... That's the total Article four without including education. This article includes 2% increases for union workers and a percent and a half for non-union workers. There are a number of sections here, and what I think I'll do is I'll go through each section, and if there's a question, we can take the questions. General Government, you have copies of this. In that section, there are total reductions of $8,454, and these come from a reduction in selectmen's expenses and town administrative expenses, specifically office supplies. Town office expenses, those include janitorial supplies, equipment, and building repairs. Again, general government, an overall reduction of $8,454. Any questions on that first section?
Mark Lee, 11 Prospect Hill Road. I noticed that the accountant's salary is going up quite markedly. Is this a full-time position and the reason for the increase?
That's an excellent question. The accountant's salary has increased. It has, it is as a result of increased time for the new accountant to a full-time position. You want to repeat that, Mike, so they...
Twenty-four to 32 hours.
Twenty-four to 32 hours. That's as a result of the increase of time. And a candidate will be announced shortly. There was a nominations committee, the Select Board has chosen a candidate, and more to follow on that. But a good question. Anything else on that section? Moving on, if I might, public safety. Under public safety, there is an overall increase of $17,587. That section, public safety, the police department expense increase is for purchasing a hybrid cruiser in conformance of what's happening industry-wide. There is an additional cost with that. Also, we are budgeting for increased fire department stipends so that we can recruit additional people. It's very difficult to recruit auxiliary firemen, and we are budgeting an increased stipend for this purpose. Also, under expenses, fire department hose replacement, that is noted, as well as emergency management central dispatch. All of the 911 calls come from a central Berkshire dispatch. There is an increase in cost. Again, for that section, an increase of $17,587. And in that section also, which is very encouraging, is a reduction of $9,129 in ambulance expenses over the preceding year. Are there any questions relative to public safety? Thank you. Moving on, Public Works. Public Works, next category. There is a reduction of $74,395 as a result in an adjustment of highway department salaries. That's a significant reduction for that particular section. And basically, are there any comments or questions relative to Public Works? There being none. Moving on, Human Services. We've had a little change here. Tri-Town Health has experienced an increase in salaries of $8,074. That is as a result of a combination of the Visiting Nurse Association into Tri-Town Health, Lenox, Lee, and Stockbridge. So therefore, you have a salary savings under the VNA on our line item and an increased salary cost under Tri-Town Health. And also, on the Council of the Aging, there will be an assimilation of this role with Great Barrington. So, the total reduction in Human Services, Tri-Town Health, VNA, Council on the Aging, is $7,909. That is a budget reduction. Any questions relative to that section? Okay? Moving on, Culture and Recreation. We note a cost in that area, an increase of $6,983. That increase comes from library air conditioning, as well as parks and recreation beach expenses. So, totally, $6,983, Culture and Recreation increase. Any questions relative to that? Thank you. Moving on, Debt Service. Debt service is the money we borrow for town hall, for equipment, fire trucks, for large vehicles, for a lot of things. Debt service being bridges and so forth. And we have, excuse me, a total reduction of $24,397 over fiscal year 21, and that includes the principal and interest of town hall, reduction in that, a reduction in the interest on a fire truck that we purchased, and interest on the garage. So, debt service, we're starting to work down debt, pre-existing debt, and that is very positive relative to our rating when we come to borrow money in the future. Our rating, incidentally, is AA-plus standard empires. Okay? Any questions on debt service? Moving on, Employee Benefits. The same as expiring benefits, Berkshire County Retirement, OPEP, Undesignated Compensation, that's compensation for people that retire, that we don't know they're going to retire, and County Health and Dental, the same as last year. And Town Insurance has increased $29,487. Having been in the insurance business, I'll tell you, insurance is going up, and you'll see that with your homeowners and automobile insurance. So therefore, with respect to Article four, again, as we have mentioned, $7,554,952 with a $61,098 reduction over fiscal year 21. Calling for a vote.
Before you go...
Yep. Go ahead.
The... Excuse me. The... All matters relating to appropriations in this town must be voted on by the Finance Committee, and I would ask the Chair of the Finance Committee to please provide us with the vote with respect to Article four only.
Finance Committee approved it.
You want to say that, please? Not to me. I know it.[1094.58][1094.58](laughing). I'm on that committee.
Finance Committee approved it unanimously.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. We'll proceed to vote now. Remember, one is yes, two is no. All set? We're open. Well, I've already called for the vote, Charlie, and...
Does this not require a debate?
Excuse me?
Does not the opportunity for debate have to be there?
I've... I already asked for that.
I'm sorry.
I asked for comment earlier.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
And...
I did not hear any request for comment from the floor.
All right. Look, I don't want to... Again, as I said, I don't want to preclude anybody from... Let's have comments or questions, okay? Please come to the microphone. Up here, please. And remember, identify yourself and please give your address as well.
I can't give my address.
Excuse me?
My name is Carol Owens. I'm a Stockbridge resident.
Your residential address, please.
There's a television camera there. I'm a senior citizen living alone. To say I'm a Stockbridge resident satisfies the law. Jay, I had a question. The $74,000 that we're saving because... Was the correct title superintendent? Highway superintendent was not hired. But in one of the finance meetings, I remember that you said that we may apply that somewhere else, that net-net, it might not be a savings. Did I hear that correctly? And if so, did we apply it somewhere else?
I think what was said was the... In the overall budget for Article four, that's where the reduction is shown of the monies that I specified. So, basically, it's applied to other... It's a reduction of the overall expense load, okay?
In that particular thing, but it's used up in the budget somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't know where, just somewhere.
Well, I mean, that's how you calculate the budget. It's not specified. You know, it's done on an aggregate basis. Salary savings in one area, we're able to functionally perform the duties that are required, and these are savings that are accrued to the overall bottom line of the Article four budget.
Thank you, Jay, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we will now proceed to vote. One is yes, two is no. Okay. Thank you. It is a vote. Article five.
You'll be through with me soon. I'm almost done. I'm getting there. Article five. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $3,72,350 for the assessment of Berkshire Hills Regional School District, and that is the operating budget.
Is there a second? Are there any questions or comments regarding this article? Seeing none, hearing none, we will now vote. One yes, two no. It is a vote. Article six.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $85,865 to pay for the town's share of principal and interest due in fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021, for the financing of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District building construction projects.
Is there a second? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. One yes, two no. It is a vote. Now, before we proceed, recall that we're going to take some items out of order, starting with Article 46. But I want to... I had said to Charlie Kenny when he made his motion to consolidate Items 7 through 20 that I would rule on the motion, if you will, at the time that we reached Article seven. But Charlie, I'm going to defer that until we've gotten... Until Article seven is actually presented, okay? Thank you very much. So, let's go to Article 46. Article 40... Is there a point of information or a point of order or...
Point of information?
Yes.
Some of these packets don't have those particular articles.
Article 46 should be on the motion list. And if anyone doesn't... If you don't have it...
There is one. If you get another one.
Ah. Oh, that I understand. We'll just take a minute to make sure that everybody has a copy of the motion list, which contains all of the articles. If you can't find Article 46 on your motion list, just raise your hand. We will get one for you.
Steve, I have a question.
I'm sorry?
I have a question.
Kate, if you wish to speak, please come to the microphone and identify yourself.
I just have a quest... My name is Kate Fletcher.
Well, wait, Kate. Let's just make sure that everybody gets the...
Okay. I can wait.
The motion list, and then I'll hear you, okay?
Thank you.
Kate, I didn't recognize you. I haven't seen you in a long time.
Great hair.
There you are.
I have permission.[1612.83][1612.83](laughing).
On the fourth page?
Hi, Kate.
The fourth page of which, Mike? On the motion list, they start on the seventh.
I'm Steve.
It's the Roman New World. That's where in the bylaw it is. The article is right here. Yeah. So, yeah.
I know. I'll get there. I know. I know why. I know why. All right. Here we are. Okay. So, I think the confusion arises because in the warrant, which everybody received a copy of, on the fourth page, it is unnumbered. If you go to the top of the fourth page of the warrant, you will see Article 46 written as Article 46. The confusion is that the internal number, which is in this case Article Roman 23, I think that's correct, refers to the specific bylaw section. So, it's the Arabic that we're interested in, not the Roman. All right. Does everyone now have a copy of Article 46? Okay. Good. Now, Kate, you wish to speak. Just identify yourself by name and address, please.
Okay. So, this is just a point of order question.
You still have to identify yourself.
Right. And my name is Kate Fletcher, and I live on Hawthorne Street. And my question has to do with sort of a follow-up to Carol Owens' comment about years ago, I had asked Ray Miaris, our former town council, with consideration for how women might feel, or elderly residents, or anyone for that matter, about identifying their street address, I asked Ray, is it necessary? And he said, no, it is not required. Could we have clarification from town council on whether that is actually required?
Well, I think in this case, it's not required as a matter of law. Your identification... Your identification by name is required. The address is not, okay? This is just... But the moderator, once the meeting starts, the moderator has the right to establish these parameters. If Carol Owens was not comfortable giving her address out, that's fine. I accept that. And if that's what other people feel, I can accept that as well. I would still nonetheless ask for an address, okay? Not going to make an issue out of it. Thank you. Okay, so again, Article... We now all have Article 46 in Arabic. And Roxanne, I think you are the presenter. Thank you.
Anne, thank you, Steve. Okay, everybody hearing me okay? Article 46. I move that the town amend the general bylaws by, number one, striking Article VI, Section IV, dog restraint, and, two, amending Article 23 to read as set forth in the warrant Article
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions?
Kate Fletcher.
Hold on. Wait just a minute.
Okay. Kate Fletcher, and I just wanted to let you know, Steve, I have an amendment that I'd like to offer. So whenever you would like me to do that...
Well, if you're moving to amend, we need to see the amendment in writing.
Okay.
Kate, from the microphone, read the amendment, please. Read the amendment. The amendment has to be read to be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting. And then you can explain the purpose of the amendment, all right? Thank you.
All right. So, Steve, the changes are incorporated into wording that is on the warrant article, but I'll just read it in its entirety so it makes sense. So this is a section... An amendment I would like to make to Section 8B. And it will read, "Not later than two business days after the impounding of any dog by the animal control officer, the owner or keeper of the dog shall be notified, or if the owner or keeper of the dog is unknown, or after reasonable efforts is not contacted, written notice shall then be posted by the animal control officer for ten consecutive business days, and the location for the posting of notices in the town hall and on the town website, which notice shall describe the dog, include a photo of the dog, and the place and time of taking. A notice shall also be posted online on the public Facebook page, Missing Pets of Berkshire County, by the animal control officer, and the Berkshire Humane Society and Sansini Animal Shelter shall be contacted with the goal of locating the owner or keeper of the dog. A licensed veterinarian with a chip reader shall check for dog ownership. Prior to this end of said ten business day period, the owner or keeper may obtain the release of any dog impounded hereunder as follows." The next two points are the same, so if I may, I will skip to the third. The only change there is to add "business" to "ten business days." And then finally, Section C is the same, and then I've added a Section D. A licensed veterinarian shall be consulted by the animal control officer in cases involving euthanasia, except in emergencies. Dogs impounded and unclaimed by the owner or keeper after the end of said ten business day period shall be rehomed, if at all possible, in conjunction with an evaluation by a licensed veterinarian and animal rehabilitator. Only after documented efforts to rehome a dog shall a dog be sent to a no-kill animal shelter."
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Please identify yourself.
Nina Ryan.
Thank you. Okay. The motion to amend has to be acted on before the main motion itself. Are there any comments on the motion to... On this amendment? Seems to me that... Charlie, will you pull the microphone up closer to... Thank you.
Charlie Kenny, five-minute road. The amendment seems to consist of two different kinds of changes. One is a change from consecutive days to business days that seems to have just a very reasonable extension of a time period so that we don't put these dogs in a situation that the owners would not like to find them too quickly. The second set of parts of the amendment are a little more complicated, involve a little bit of extra responsibility on the part of the animal control officer, which I think, and this is something that Kate could comment on probably, is probably already in place for the most part, except for a few additional items. Am I not correct about that, Kate?
Yes, I worked on this.
Through me. Please, through me.
Okay.
Okay? We're not going to have a dialogue going on the floor. If you wish to comment, please speak through me. Go ahead.
I worked on this with our animal control officer. The great news is that... John, are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
The great news is that... This is John Drake, our animal control officer. Pleased to meet you.
Pleased to meet you.
The great news is that he's already doing many of these things. What this does is write it in so that... I mean, I hope John will be doing this for many, many years, but should someone else be doing what John is already doing, that this will be written in. We basically have 255 licensed dog owners in Stockbridge. Last year, we received 136 calls. John received 136 calls, and he has yet to have a dog stay overnight. So he's doing this work, and if you will recognize John, I'll let him say a few words.
Okay. Kate, are there any other comments or questions regarding the motion only? The motion to amend?
I don't think you heard a phrase.
If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone.
Well, maybe you should pay attention to what Kate's saying, because she just asked you if you could give... This is Nina Ryan from 3 Main Street, Stockbridge, and Kate requested for John to be able to say a few words, but you didn't. You missed it.
Thank you.
I will try to pay more attention. We welcome guests to the microphone. Just identify yourself by name and address, please.
My name's John Drake. I'm the ACO here in town. And yes, all of the things that Kate spoke of are already in... Being used. The Berkshire... The Missing Pets of Berkshire County has been extremely helpful, and we have been very fortunate to have rehomed... Not rehomed, but found the owners of these animals within one day. We have not had one spend the night yet. We do not have a kennel. I'd like to know if we... Maybe in the future, I could have a place to store them. Right now, we're yoking with the Town of Lee, and they're very kind enough to allow us to use their space. Other than that, we're doing very well as far as returning these animals.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Any other comments on the motion to amend? Seeing none, hearing none, we will proceed to vote on the amendment only, and then we will go to the main motion thereafter. We're just putting it in... He's just putting it into the computer so that it can be properly identified. Voting is now open. Remember, you're voting on the motion to amend, and one is yes, two is no. 138 in favor, 19 opposed. Now, just for clarification purposes, my understanding, and please correct me, Kate, if I'm wrong, the motion as passed is in effect a substitution of the article as presented on the floor. Okay. Just wanted to be clear about that. We will now vote on the main motion as amended. All those in favor, one. 146 to 11. It's a vote. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, and excuse me, just for a moment. I know people can be very passionate about matters. Pleased with all the applause, or any other indication of approval or disapproval. Thank you. Next is Article 47. Now, again, 47 is... Appears on the warrant. No, it's 47. We just did 46. It's right here. No, it's right here. This is at the Stockbridge Bowl Stewardship Committee. Yeah, no, I understand. Okay. So remember, Article 47 is the Arabic. It appears in the warrant. It is a... It is with... In any event, if anyone has... Is everyone finding it?
27 in Roman.
Yes, it's 27 in Roman. Yes, thank you. Okay. All right, Roxanne, go to it. It's all yours.
Article 47. I move that the town amend the general bylaws by adding a new Article 27 as set forth in the warrant Article 47, so as to create a Stockbridge Bowl Stewardship Commission to protect and preserve Stockbridge Bowl, Lake Mackinac, its watershed and ecosystem for future generations.
Mr. Kenny, seconds. Is there any discussion, comments, or questions about this article?
Charlie Kenny, met a road. I think that this...
Come closer to the microphone, Charlie. You're taller than that microphone.
This commission is an extension of a committee that was formed about two years ago, a little more than that, and it's been a very useful and helpful aspect of proceeding with controlling the environment in the Stockbridge Bowl, and I hope eventually around the Stockbridge Bowl. The Stockbridge Bowl, as everyone realizes, is a very valuable resource in town, and the committee has already helped quite a bit in terms of planning the ongoing lake management and monitoring the lake for various kinds of things, including preventing the cyanobacterial blooms that we have had in the past. So I would heartily recommend that everyone vote for this change from the committee into a commission.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Okay. The yeses have it 146 to 11. Thank you. Article 48. Mr. Cardillo, nice to see you.
Article 48. I move that the town amend the general bylaw by adding a new Article 28 as set forth in the article 48, so to address the regulations of building numbering as defined in MGL Chapter 148, Section 59, to ensure that first responders correctly identify a building location in event of emergency.
Is there a second? Any comments or questions on this? Craig, you want to come up here, please?
On the... Craig Moffett, 2 Devway Road. On the number 2.3 of how they shall be mounted, most of the time, if it's mounted like this in my driveway, it'd be plowed over. I have a number 2 on a tree that is very visible, for instance. So that's my question. Does... Because I know that if I put a steel post with number 2 on it, it'll be gone the first snowfall.
I'm sure it's a question a number of people have. Anyone else? Yes?
Terry Moore, 20 Main Street. The question is, if we approve this article that you're suggesting, does that mean that the language in the article number 28 is accepted, or is it at this time that we correct the language if we choose to do so? In other words, in line 2.3...
Yes.
I have a motion to make. And that is to strike. Shall be mounted on steel or wood post measuring four inches by four inches. And this relates to the gentleman's query. Do I make that motion now, or do I...
You certainly make the motion right now.
All right.
Did you just make the motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay. That's fine. We just need a second to that motion. All right. Now, let's be clear. Hold on before you go. 2.3. Okay, thank you. That's fine. We'll get that to you. All right. Again, the motion has been made to strike. This is in Section 2.3. I don't want to rely upon memory here. To strike the following words. Shall be mounted on a steel or wood post measuring four by four...
Inches.
Inches. Oh, that's... Well, that's the inches symbol, isn't it?
There you go.
Yes, thank you very much. I thought it might be inches, inches, but...
No, no.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The motion's been made, and seconded is... Before we proceed to vote on the main motion, we have to vote on... we have to vote on the, this motion to amend. Is there any comment, further comment, or on the motion to amend?
I'd like to comment. May I comment on the motion that I-
Certainly, go right ahead.
Thank you. I find the language is vague, it's misleading, and overly restrictive. As the gentleman said who preceded me, that if he had to do what this was calling for, it would not work well for him. Why is it vague? Well, steel, first of all, usually comes in a round section, and to require all homeowners to have a four-inch by four-inch steel post, or a four-inch by four-inch wood post, is asking too much for most of us. If you go to Home Depot and buy a four-by-four piece of wood, you'll find it's three-and-a-half by three-and-a-half inches. So, so, if in fact you're going to require it to be four inches, and anybody's going to be checking on it, then that needs to be adjusted. Why is it overly restrictive? Well, first of all, it means that you could not have an aluminum post, you couldn't have a six-by-six wood post, which I'd prefer personally. You could not have a stone post, which is very attractive. And you could not have a brick post. You could not attach it to a wall. You could not attach it to a tree. And our neighbors certainly do that very well. That's it.
Okay. Thank you for the editorial comments. Are there any other comments on the motion to amend? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. We're voting again on the amendment only, which is striking the language at the beginning of Section 2.3. The voting is open. Yeses have at 149 to 11. We'll now proceed to vote on the, on the article as amended by the motion that was just passed. The voting is open. One is yes, two is no. The yeses have at 122 to 28. Okay. Article 49. Mr. White.
Can everyone hear me? I hear I'm quite self-spoken. I move that the town amend the general bylaws by adding a new Article 29 as set forth in the warrant Article 49 to address wildlife feeding, to protect the health and welfare of both people and wildlife, by prohibiting the feeding or attracting of wildlife.
Is there a second? There's a second here. I'm told, by the way, by the technician, that the modulation of a voice from any of these microphones is being controlled over here, fortunately, so it's, Patrick, it's not necessary for you to speak in quite such stentorian tones. Okay? Is there any discussion on? Any discussion on Article 49? In the back, there's a handout. Yes, you do, because you may have to answer questions. So am I.
I have a question.
John Hart, Rattlesnake Mountain Road in Stockbridge. Under Section 2, there is a word that's attractant, and it goes through a number of what seemingly bears like to eat. However, something that is not included in it are grills, gas grills, charcoal grills, whatever. And they tend to be very strong attractants to blue air, blue air's bear, or any other bear. And essentially, what you're saying in this article is everybody who has a grill outside either needs to completely and utterly sanitize it when they're done using it, which is probably not going to happen, or they need to put it inside at night. And I would submit that there probably are very few people who would put their grill inside at night. That's the end of my comment.
John, are you proposing an amendment to the, to the bylaw? I mean, you're coming, it's the only way that it's going to get changed if you, if you think it's appropriate.
Well, I didn't come prepared with an amendment, unfortunately, and I don't have a pen. However, if I were to-
Well, we can help you with that, if you'd like.
I would submit that we amend it to-
Sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to amend it. I mean, you know, what do we do, say that people don't have to put their grills in at night? Or, you know, I'm just, I'm making a statement here that something has been left out which isn't attractant. And if we leave it as it is, it reads that people are going to have to take the grills in or out, or whatever, every time they use it. And also, I should say, I'm having an arthritic kick in my hand, and I can't write.
Okay, that's fine.
I was just, it says any substance. The substance of grease in a grill is a substance. It's also an attractant.
No, I understand your point. Chief Fenley? You can't hide back there.
Good morning, everybody.
Your name and address, please.
Chief Darryl Fenley. I reside downstairs at 50 Main for most of my life. Normally, at Teresa Terrace in Lee. So, to John's question, or John's thoughts on this, well, the, while the proposal says, you know, any substance, including food, which would include grease on a grill, the enforcing agent on this would be the Stockbridge Police Department. And since we have a little latitude in how we conduct our business, it's, having a grill out is not a problem, until it's a problem. If you have a grill out that's just pouring grease all over the place, and it's attracting bears to your neighborhood, and attracting bears to your neighbor's property, and it's causing damage there, or something like that happens, then we'll have a conversation. We're going to come and say, hey, listen, we've got a complaint here. What can we do together to solve that? This is the spirit of this proposal. It's not to be heavy-handed with anybody to say, you can't have a bird feeder, you can't have a grill, you can't have this, you can't have that. That is not what this is about. The reason this is proposed is because we have bears walking down Elm Street in the middle of the afternoon. While bears typically don't want anything to do with people, the, the, joining together of people and bears in the same area is potentially dangerous. And that is kind of the spirit of this bylaw. It's to prevent that interaction, people and bears. Because bears are wild animals, and you don't know what they're going to do. For the most part, they're going to keep walking down Elm Street and look for another food source. However, if it's a, if it's a female bear with cubs, you might have a problem, whether you smell like food or not. Typically, they're just attracted to food, not to people themselves. But with cubs in the mix, you don't know what's going to happen. So, for us to be regulating and coming to someone's house and saying, oh, you can't have that grill, probably not going to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? This gentleman over here. Fine. Go ahead.
Beth Carlson, 9 South Street, Stockbridge. The way I was reading this is it appears to indicate that bird feeding is not allowed, and I just wanted clarification.
Yep.
Under, what is it, Section, Section 5.4, I believe, allows for bird feeders.
Any other comment? This gentleman over here, I'd recognized before. What? Alan, did you wish to speak? No, from the microphone, please.
James Wunderm, 20 Mohawk Lake Road. I, I think maybe you answered it in the respect I was wondering, too, about whether bird feeders are allowed. I mean, is the common sense of when you take them in and out and so forth, and you're saying they are?
That is my understanding.
Well, it's in the, it's in the bylaw.
Okay.
The proposed bylaw. Thank you.
Hello, Mary Hart, Rattlesnake Mountain Road. I think a lot of these issues are really based on education and educating people. I'm not sure if we need an article to do this. I think it's about, you know, getting, getting this out to folks, and I'm not sure how to do it, and I don't think by having a warrant, it's going to make people stop doing what they're, what they shouldn't be doing, because they don't know anyway, possibly. But I think it's more about education. Is that a warrant?
Thank you. Chief, you had another comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, I'll just, on Mary's point, education is a big part of it. She's absolutely 100% right. What this does is when we have violators who are blatantly violating the law, we actually have people that are actually feeding bears from the window of their house, which is attracting bears into that neighborhood, and who are then destroying property, breaking into people's garages, things like that. We have businesses in town that weren't taking care of their dumpsters, so we have garbage strewn all over Laurel Hill. Unfortunately, when that happens without a bylaw, we have no teeth to enforce that incorrect action. To the point before, in the, in the bylaw, it does say, Section 4, Number 4, this article shall not be interpreted, interpreted so as to prohibit bird feeders or bird feeding, provided that if a, if a bird feeder or bird feed is determined to be the feeding source in causing an attractant issue or public safety threat, the bird feeder and seed debris are removed within 48 hours. So, it doesn't say you can't have it, you can absolutely have bird feeders. But remember, you want to, you want to just be smart about it. If the bear comes into your yard and tears your bird feeder down, great, no problem. If you don't have a problem with it, no big deal. If the bear comes into your yard, tears your bird feeder down, then goes over to your neighbors, and then your other neighbors, and tears theirs, theirs down, and they call us, that's when we're probably just going to have a discussion and see what we can do to solve the problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, somewhere I wanted to add. Let's just bear in mind that in downtown, if a bear attacks-
Bad choice of words.
Anywhere. All right, anywhere in town, if a bear attacks a pet or, God forbid, a person because we're feeding bears, that bear is going to be put down, let alone the hurt to the pet or the person. So, I believe this bylaw protects the bears. It does not infringe upon the bears, and I think it's incumbent on all of us to, to take actions that do not put bears at risk, and this is one of them.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Again, Steve. Sorry. Again, I'm sorry I left that out, but to Patrick's point, he's-
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Again, I'd like people who have not had an opportunity to speak on this article to have the opportunity to do so. So, this is-
Louise Gachet, 39 Church Street. The bears are here to stay. The bears come in because of fruit on trees, they come in for lots and lots of reasons. The fact that bird seed is listed as one of the attractants is going to be an issue down the road. And the article says nothing about the timing in which one has bird feeders out. I think this, this article is full of things said and unsaid. I don't think it's well-presented, and I would just urge people not to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, John Lyons, Ice Glen Road. Just to strike on what you said, I have 15 acres, I probably have 30 apple trees, couple of pear trees, I have corn, I have all kinds of wild stuff, I have families of bears that live on my property. I get it, but I don't want to remove any of my agriculture or any of my fruit trees because, I don't know. Maybe we could work that into the article somehow.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny, you wish to speak?
Yes, I'd like, Charlie Kenny, I'd like to support the police department, and I wonder if this might not be helpful, this kind, I'd like to propose an amendment if the chief agrees with me about that, is to insert before wildlife the word nuisance. And to define nuisance as being, I'll leave, let the chief speak to this, being, meaning that it could reasonably lead to a complaint, or be expected to lead to a complaint, or has led to a complaint, so that, that people can go about doing things, but at the same time, it would support the chief's goal.
Charlie, you need to provide us with the motion in writing, so that it can be read to everybody here, and we can be clear about the language. So, I'll wait for you to do that.
Well, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask the chief if he'd like to amend his motion to include the word nuisance so, as he defines before the wildlife, and if that might not help out things.
Well, let's be clear. It's not the chief's motion, there is an article on the floor which has been seconded. If someone wishes to amend the article, they have to submit a motion in writing, and that is not coming from the chief. So, Mr. Stokes?
Tom Stokes, Interleakin Road. Just to follow up on what Charlie just said, I think the chief has been quite explicit on why this article, this warrant would be, this article would be helpful to the police department. Your question, Mr. Moderator, that the amendment should come from someone else, is I understand Charlie's point, is that he's inquiring of the chief, would the chief be agreeable? And I think that's a very valid question. Before anyone wants to offer that amendment, they should know if the chief would agree to that.
Tom, I don't disagree with that concept, but what, I just wasn't clear about what the nature of the motion was. I'd like to see the motion, which Mr. Kenny is preparing right now, it can be read to everyone, and then the chief can address the motion as written. Of course you may. Please. Your microphone.
Roxanne McCaffrey, West Stockbridge Road. I just wanted to point out, based on one of the earlier comments, Section 5 includes exceptions, and within those exceptions, any individual company, number 3, any individual company or corporation that's engaged in farming. Farming is defined herein as lawful agricultural pursuits, included but not limited to growing crops, crop-bearing plants, or raising livestock where revenue from said activities represents a majority of income. So, I think, again, just like the bird feeders, this is, we're not worried about your apple trees. We're only worried when something becomes a repetitive problem, and then the police are going to be responding, and typically, that will start with a conversation.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has not previously spoken to this motion who wishes to be heard? Please.
Catherine Newey, 16 West Stockbridge Road. I agree with Mary-
I agree with Mary Hart about education, and I do want to say something about the timing. We know that where we live, on behind the Loveless property, there's a sow who's had three babies for four years in a row. So we have many black bear that cut through our property daily. And if you're feeding Sue it, please look into the type that has cayenne pepper. It's very orange and red, and it is a deterrent to bears. They will not eat it if it is orange. They're very smart. They learn quickly. And to be thinking that taking in your bird seed in the nighttime is sufficient, you are gravely mistaken.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who... Go ahead.
I have my motion written. I recommend that we amend the article to insert the word nuisance everywhere before wildlife within the article, and to define nuisance as likely to lead to a complaint or already having caused a complaint.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion? There's a second over here. And now, I think the question is properly put to the chief as to whether or not this is a...
Yeah, I think that's wholly reasonable.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other? Again, we're going to vote on the motion. Charlie, can I have the... There was a second. Yes, just here. I know. Sorry. Who seconded that motion? May I see it, please? No, 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 no. No, no, no. We've got a call to question here. Okay, recall, we are still discussing the amendment, Mr. Kenny's amendment. And this gentleman over here wishes to speak to the amendment.
My name is Nick Room, and I live on Main Street in Stockbridge at Number 55. On the question of enforcement, I'm looking at the reference to compost heaps. Many of us here have...
Excuse me, excuse me. We, this is a discussion on the amendment only. Okay, that, the amendment is, that Mr. Kenny has made is on the floor for discussion. Further discussion on the main motion, we'll go back to. Okay?
Okay.
So you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Is there anybody who wishes to make any further comment on the motion to amend? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote on the amendment. It's open now. Voting is open. Yeses have at 131 to 24. We'll now return to the main motion. And I think I, this gentleman, you may speak. Again, if you could just identify yourself again.
Thank you. My name is Nick Room, and I live at 55 Main Street in Stockbridge. Many of us have or maybe are considering having compost heaps or collectors on our property. Those compost heaps tend to have combinations of kitchen clippings and lawn clippings and so on. Speaking to the whole issue of enforceability, how is that going to work? I mean, as a practical matter, compost heaps do not, you know, if they do attract rodents, there's a way of getting around it. But if the town is going to be requiring that we establish, you know, large bear-proof or otherwise secure receptacles, that might be a little bit burdensome and maybe unnecessary. So I'm wondering a little bit about that. And maybe we can propose an amendment to delete the reference to compost heaps entirely.
If you're proposing an amendment, you have to submit it in writing. But in the meantime, I wonder if the chief could address this gentleman's question.
So again, compost piles would be like a bird feeder. It would be like any other attract... And again, the Stockbridge Police Department is not going to become, if this passes, we're not going to become the bear police. We're not going to come and patrol your property looking for a compost pile or a bird feeder and then come in and tell you to take it down. We're only going to enforce anything if it becomes a problem. So like I said before, if you have an attractant on your property and it's not causing any trouble anywhere else, which this is 99% of the town. This is, people have these already, and it's not a problem. All right? All this bylaw is for is to be able to handle a problem if one happens. So I'm guessing that most people here have these already, bird feeders, compost piles, things like that. If the bears are coming to your compost pile and leaving, and they're not destroying your neighbor's property and your neighbor, or even if they are and your neighbor's not calling us, we're not going to do anything about it. It's only if it becomes a problem. And if it becomes a problem, the first step is that we have a conversation as to how can we work together to solve the problem. We're not going to come in first thing and start writing tickets to people. It's not what's going to happen.
I can't call the question. Thank you.
Sorry.
This gentleman, thank you.
Ken Krensa, 2 Gideon Drive. And pursuant to section 5.3, I'm not a farmer, but I do have gardens. And blueberries are an attractant, so my amendment would be simple just to add the word farmer slash gardening.
Agriculture is exclu, well, is it...
Agriculture is already excluded.
Already excluded.
All agriculture.
Okay, I'm good.
Before this gentleman speaks, Michael Nathan, I think. I saw your hand go up before.
Oh, okay. Michael Nathan, Lake Drive, 14 Lake Drive. One of the things that you have in here is about bear-proof container dumpsters, which I think, which is so important. I'm so happy this is in. We have a lot of second homeowners. We have a lot of people that have Airbnbs. And where we live, people leave their garbage out, and the garbage is all over the place. A lot of people have dogs or pets. And people are getting their garbage picked up by a trucking company or whatever. So I urge everybody to realize the importance that there should be a rule that if you want to leave your garbage out, there should be some protection for your neighbors in such a way as having the bear-proof garbage and hope for the best that that works.
Thank you for the comment. This gentleman.
Steve Miller, 2 Elm Street. I think this gives the town a tool to use against those miscuriant business owners who won't take care of the problem. And we know who they are.
Thank you.
Section 3.1, we just wanted to clarify. The language is, "as well as standing crops planted and left up..." This is under the... Language is, "as well as standing crops planted and left standing as wildlife food plots that may be used by wild animals" is not considered feeding for the purpose of these regulations and is allowed. That's already in there in section 3.1.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak who has not spoken before? John, do you have something new to add? Because if it's something new.
Yes.
You promise?
I promise.
Okay. Go ahead.
First of all, my name is John Hart, and I live on Rattlesnake Mountain Road. And we get visited by blue ears. To my wife's point, Mary, education. For those of you who might not know this, bears go to sleep in the wintertime. It's called hibernation. And your bird feeders can be pretty much anywhere you want. But when it starts to get warm, the bears wake up, and they bring their cubs out, and they look for bird feeders. So it's kind of an intuitive thing as to when you take the bird feeders in. But birds at this time of year, they don't need bird feeders. I mean, they might be cute to look at, but they don't need bird feeders. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. There being no other comments, we will now vote on the main motion as previously amended. All those in favor, 1. All those opposed, 2. And it's open. Thank you. 139 to 23, the yeses have it. It's a vote. Article 50, Mr. Cardillo.
Article 50. I moved out of town and meant to adjourn by law by adding a new article 30 as set forth in the warrant, Article 50, adding a right-to-farm bylaw to encourage the pursuit of agricultural, promotes agriculture-based economic opportunities, and protects farmlands within the town of Stockbridge.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? Wow. Denny, thank you. You want to come to the microphone, please?
Just as a point of information...
Would you identify yourself, please? By name and address.
My name is Denny Alsop. I'm from Main Street. And I think that it's important that people who are involved with agriculture be particularly sensitive to the possibility of pesticides, manure, getting into streams which contribute to our precious water resources, particularly the Stockbridge Bowl. And the times when this happens are episodic in nature, usually after a hard rain or during a hard rain or during the snow melt. And so I would just like to say that I hope that people who are farming will be sensitive to this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other comments on this article? Hearing none. Excuse me. There is a comment over here. I'm sorry.
Sorry, it all sounds, Nick Room in Main Street, Stockbridge. It all sounds great, but why do we need this exactly?
Who proposed this article? Who proposed the article? You did? Okay.
If you read the article, it protects the farmer, protects the adjacent properties. So somebody buys a property next to a farm and really complains about things. They have, this allows a process of how to go about complaints that's fair to both sides. Every, pretty much every town in Bertha County has this, I believe, except for Stockbridge. So it does protect the farmer, and it also protects adjacent landowners. It gives them the opportunity to do the complaints in the process that is set forth by the state.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes, Tom Stokes, Interleakin Road. I just have a couple of questions. Certainly, I'm very supportive of farming. I'm just wondering why the need for this bylaw. That's question one. And number two, would this bylaw in any way preclude other laws pertaining to the use of herbicides and pesticides?
No, it does not. It doesn't override any of the other laws set as pesticides and herbicides with the conservation or anybody.
So just to be clear, this bylaw would not give a potential farmer the right to use pesticides or herbicides if other regulations would control those. Is that correct?
Correct.
Kate Fletcher. My comment is that...
Kate, hold on just a moment, please. This lady was at the microphone first.
Thank you. Angela Vanyo in Glendale Willow Street. I'm just wondering about the definition of the word "farm" in section 2 definitions. And I'm wondering on sizes because we have a large family garden, and I would like large gardens to be included in this amendment.
I believe it does include vegetable gardens, fruit gardens. Where did you have that? I'm sorry. Section what?
The definitions, section 2. It just says, "The word 'farm' shall include any parcel or continuous parcels of land or water bodies used for the primary purpose of commercial agriculture." And if you're using your land as a farming, as a large garden for personal use, I would like that to be included.
I believe it is included. It's in the next page. I know it's in there.
It seems to be focused on commercial use.
Roxanne, where is this?
Yeah. Yeah, it's farming in all its branches and the cultivation of tillage of the soils, all those branches.
So what section is that?
That would be section 4. Section, I'm sorry, section 2. The word "farm" or agriculture or the... Section 2. The farming, in all its branches.
Okay.
That should include all, personal.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's yours. Chuck, is this is yours? No, this is mine. Okay. Other ques, yes. Mr. Ball fans, you have a question. Kate, you have a question. Sorry.
I just want to make the comment that our zoning table of uses already allows agriculture. So I'm not really sure this is necessary. And then Chuck, if you could clarify, maybe I misheard you, but I heard you say two different things. One, that this protects butters. And two, that it means that butters can't bring a complaint. So our existing zoning bylaw allows for a better concerns, and I don't see that written into this other than a process of going before a committee. into this, other than a process of going before a committee. So I'd like a little more information and clarification on that.
Yeah, it's a whole section and resolution of disputes that covers all of that. So--
I'm just going to ask Town Council to come forward. Donna Brewer, to provide some clarification regarding the law. Please.
Hello, Donna Brewer, Town Council. So in a sense, you are right in saying, why do we need this? It doesn't add anything to what you already have in the law, under General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 3, and under the town bylaw, agriculture is allowed, and it is a protected use. However, this right-to-farm bylaw does a couple of things that is not otherwise found in the bylaws or in the law. As the moderator just mentioned, it does include a dispute resolution provision to allow people to talk to one another with a neutral party, which would be the Farm Commission, that would try to resolve any differences that there might be, let's say, over nuisance odors, or something like that. The other thing it does is it provides people moving into town the information that this is a town that recognizes and appreciates its agricultural products and heritage, and that notice is given to people who are looking into buying into town, moving into town. There is a provision for that in here as well. The bylaw you are considering is a model right-to-farm bylaw that is recommended to be adopted by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, by the state.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to this gentleman first over here in the, thank you, in your name and address, please.
Matthew Boudreau for Manatac Heights. Nice to see everyone. I am your Agriculture and Forestry Commission, that was set up for this bylaw for disputes. So what the council just said is, the bylaw is set up so if there is an issue, say with a property next door, smells, odors from farming, that we all, you know, can appreciate in our own ways, there's a way for you to come and talk to us, and we'll make a recommendation for the select board of how to handle, move forward with the process. Some of you are saying, why do we need this now? USDA defines farms as 200 acres. That's a small farm to the USDA. I don't know of anyone here that's planning on tearing out the forest and putting 200 acres of corn in, and spraying it all with pesticides. So what we're trying to do is, we're protecting small farms that are under 200 acres, giving them a voice, and hopefully support them to prosper in Stockbridge. So I am for this bylaw, and I hope you all be for it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. This gentleman.
Emerson Hawley, Lukeman Lane. I'm a new resident, so I don't know what the zoning is in town, but I presume this doesn't mean that my neighbor in my residential area can get a cow, that there are zoning laws which specify where farms can be located, and the minimum size, and so on.
Donna Brewer, Town Council, again. Yes, this does not change any existing zoning. So anything that is allowed currently is still allowed. There's no restrictions that are added, but there's also no permissive use that's being added that isn't already allowed.
Donna, would you stay there, please?
You wish to be recognized, sir?
Please.
Your name and address, please.
Jim Ballfans, 400 Lake and Road, Stockbridge. The reason I wanted Donna to stay there is, I would like to suggest, and I would ask her legal opinion, Section 2 and definitions. Would it be proper to insert on the bottom, on the, I'll say, "The word farm shall include any parcel or contiguous parcels of land or water bodies used for the primary purpose of commercial slash personal agriculture?" I think that would take care of a lot of the questions people have. People who have a personal garden, those sorts of things. Would that be a viable amendment?
So he's talking about putting it here, "commercial slash personal." Problem is, I think you need to put it in more places than just there, because there's other references to farming operations and--
Yeah. Okay. The Town Council advises, Jim, that the inclusion of this language would have to occur in a number of other places in this proposed bylaw. So I just want to give Donna Brewer a minute or two to take a look at this, before you propose this as a motion. We'll come back to it in just a moment, okay? Laura.
Hi, I'm Laura Duvesta. I'm a resident of Stockbridge. And I so support the bylaw and the intent of the bylaw, my real questions, and the dispute resolution portion. My questions really relate to the broad statement of, "It is determined that whatever impact may be caused to others through the normal practice of agriculture is more than offset by the benefits of farming to the neighborhood, community, and society in general." And then the same thing, that activities be conducted in accordance with generally accepted agricultural practices. Because these really evolve over time, and sometimes what was accepted 10 years ago may not be accepted now, or they also change. And as Denny mentioned, there can be real conflicts between farming practices and water quality. So just to assume that farming never always has the, those positive impacts will dwarf any negative impacts, I don't know if that's reasonable at this time. I'm not really proposing that we change it, but I'm just curious about how that, what that impacts are. What does that kind of statement do in terms of the intent of the bylaw?
Anyone wish to comment on? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this motion? Nina.
Nina Ryan, 3 Main Street. I was trying to think where this motion would become, or this law would become particularly relevant, and it seems to me that marijuana farming is one of the places where it will become very relevant. Every other town around here is dealing with that. I don't know if we've already dealt with that in our zoning yet, and if, but I think that we should be pretty careful about, you know, what we do, considering that that's a very active pressure. And so I think we should really think about that, and know what we're doing with this law, and not just pass it. You know, I think small farming is great, too, but I think the pesticide question, I don't know what the Farm Commission is, what, where they stand, what their purpose is. I don't, as an authority, I don't know what it means to have them make a decision. I know what it means to have our town make a decision. So I don't really like that either. So I have a lot of questions about this, considering the marijuana, the pressures for marijuana farming. Thank you.
The marijuana question is only, marijuana won't be grown in the industrial section of town. That's already a zoning bylaw.
Okay, just two more comments, and then I think we have to move along. And after this, the vote on this motion, we're going to take, not exactly the seventh inning stretch, but I think everybody needs to be able to stand up for five minutes before we move on.
Shelby Marshall, Cherry Hill Road. I just want to point out, in Section 3, about the middle part of it, it says, "The benefits and protections of this bylaw are intended to apply exclusively to those commercial agriculture and farming operations and activities conducted in accordance with generally accepted agricultural practices." So I think that extending this to personal gardening really goes against the intention of the bylaw, and I wonder if personal gardening has, if people who have personal gardens have their own alternate ways of being protected from any disputes with neighbors.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please.
Catherine Newey, 16 West Stockbridge Road. We're just west of the Botanical Gardens. For people who don't know, that West Stockbridge Road is Route 102. I'd like to speak for Gary Johnston and myself. We've been trying to get this right-to-farm in Stockbridge for many, many years, being fellow farmers. And all of the community-supported agriculture, people might not have known that we had in 2011 and 2012, a CSA on our property there. So when you have community-supported agriculture, we are extremely sensitive to the ways in which the food are prepared for you to eat. We actually even guard the vernal pool, this between us and 14 West Stockbridge Road. The only type of addition we make to the soil is diotomaceous earth to protect cabbages and these types of things. We do not put anything on herbicides or pesticides. We're near Larry Wog Brook. We have about this vernal pool, and actually, we look at the macroinvertebrates, the tiny ebony jewel wings, and other kinds of macroinvertebrates in the water, to make sure that they're there, because if they're not there, you should not be eating what you take out of your garden. And we're very glad that the Botanical Gardens has purchased that property, and we hope to work closely with them along these lines. So I did want to address the herbicide and pesticide issue. If a farmer, and all the CSAs that I know of, Brattle Farm, Woven Roots, and the list is long, it is really very embarrassing that we are the only town that does not have the right to farm, because what the council has said is very true. There are many of us with the pressures on food sources coming down, which we all have lived through this last year. We are being fierce about protecting our food supply access. And I suggest strongly that if you care to eat within the next 10 years, you support this bylaw.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Hearing none. I'm trying, friends.
I support the amendment, and I withdraw my intention of inserting personal--
Thank you, Jim. Most appreciated. That's appreciated. This gentleman has already spoken to the motion.
I have an amendment.
You have the right to it.
The amendment I'm proposing is, reading as follows. This bylaw shall not be interpreted to exempt anyone engaged in farming from any law, regulation, or other restriction on the use and application of pesticides, herbicides, or other GMO substances.
Is there a second? Any comment? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote on the, I know, I know, I know, I know you want to see this first. I know. The electronic register has to work first. Okay. Before we vote, I'm just going to repeat the motion, and if I've made a mistake, it's only because of my inability to read your handwriting. "This bylaw shall not be interpreted to exempt anyone engaged in farming from any law, regulation, or other restriction on the use and application of pesticides, herbicides, or GMO substances." Okay, so we're now going to proceed to vote. We're voting on the motion only. We're ready. All those in favor of the amendment, one. 102 to 46, the amendment is carried. We'll now return to the main motion, and unless there is further comment, we will proceed to vote. This is the main motion, as amended by the amendment that was just passed. So, open? We're open to vote. One, yes. The motion has passed, 135 to 17. It's a vote. Now, before we proceed, again, five minutes. Stay here, please. Don't leave.